继续我们今天的
Let's resume the public hearing. Ms. Carmen Khan's turn. Thank you, Chair. I haven't finished on Gen three, so I'd like to go back to Gen three, please. So my question is on the consultant, that's consultant X in the report. My first question for the administration is this. What is the value of having a consultant? Secretary. My reply to Ms. Khan's question is this. Of course, the Works Department is primarily responsible for the project. Now, the value of consultant lies in the fact that it assists the department. For example, tendering. Our consultant will have, will make reference to, say, the design or the detailed design prepared in evaluating the cost estimates. And then the Highways Department will also review the work of the consultant in, say, making recommendations on the tender bids. And the consultant also helps the department in question in terms of monitoring after the contract has been awarded. That means the consultant must be professional in giving advice in preparing estimates, for example, so as to help the department cope with unforeseen circumstances. Because we see from funding applications to Legislative Council contingency provision as well as the provision for price adjustment, as we earlier discussed. Normally, these provisions should not be utilized. Well, it could be considered as a second-tier emergency provision. But then would you agree with me that the value of consultant actually lies in these areas? And that is the capability of preparing estimates and predicting unforeseen circumstances. As I said, the responsibility of the consultant relates to, for example, preparing estimates on the basis of the project design or the detailed design, as well as preparing tender documents. So to answer Ms. Khan's question on whether it's the consultant's function to exercise the professional knowledge to minimize the chance of having anything unforeseen. Well, I think you could put it this way, but by unforeseen circumstances, they are something that we have not expected at the design or detailed design stage. So when the unforeseen circumstances arise, requiring additional efforts, the consultant would fulfill their role. And that means they would exercise professional judgment to decide whether the circumstances are indeed unforeseen. And the consultant will be the gatekeeper in approving additional sums. They will also provide professional advice for the department to consider giving approval. Let's turn to page twelve, Roman three of Gen three. It is said that although the consultant X has already followed the harbor design works manual, and that's relating to the four hundred thousand square meters of fill material required for recommendation, according to the early estimate of the consultant and later on, eight hundred and fifty thousand cubic meters were used, far exceeding the early estimate. According to the administration, when consultant X conducted site investigation according to the manual, Contractor B was required according to the contract to conduct site investigation or ground investigation with more frequently so as to determine the quantity of fill materials. Now, the Highways Department gave a poor performance rating to consultant X in twenty thirteen in the fourth quarter. And that affected the chance of consultant X winning government contracts in the subsequent three years. So I want to know whether that was actually the case, whether the chance was indeed affected. Director of Highways.
Yes, the contractor did an investigation for each hundred meter. They followed the port works design manual, but we were thinking it could be possible for them to conduct more investigations, more frequent investigations. So your assessment was that their performance was poor, unsatisfactory. And this would affect the scores they get when they bid for other contracts. We might have to provide information in relation to which contracts they failed to bid.
Ms. Khan.
A government department may procure or engage contractor. In relation to a department's assessment on the contractor's performance, would that information be shared with other departments? We look at the contractor's previous performance when we decide which contractor would win the contract. Ms. Khan. Say a contractor gets an unsatisfactory performance rating, and within three years' time, how would they be affected in relation to the chance of them winning other contracts? Also, while the chance of winning other contracts may be affected, I see that there is no sanction mechanism in place. What is the reason behind? No sanctions, no penalty. The mechanism is not clearly spelled out in the contract, but the performance assessment mechanism reflects the contractor's performance and if need be, we might ask for compensation. So there is a compensation mechanism rather than a sanction mechanism. Mr. Yao, Ms. Khan understands it correctly. The contract would state what kind of services the contractor will have to provide. If there is a negligence on the contractor's part, we might consult legal experts for advice. Well, Mr. Yao said the administration would have to look at the design of the works. If you didn't make an accurate projection, you can't really blame the contractor or consultant. There is detailed design and you have to release the tender documents. The new engineering contracts involve construction works primarily. Is there room for improvement in coming up with a reward and penalty mechanism? Say, the new engineering contract approach is a risk-based approach. Say a contractor or consultant makes an accurate estimate, would there be a reward for them? This is reflected on their quarterly performance assessment. And this can significantly affect the chance of winning other contracts in the future. So the score or rating they get in a quarterly assessment would have an impact on them. The higher the rating, the better the chance they win other contracts in the future. Ms. Khan. Consultant X plays an important role in this project because it involves eight contracts. We talked about the role of Contractor B in coming up with an estimate of the rock, the fill materials required. Let's look at Table three. Page eight of the report. For Contract B, the eventual payment exceeds the regional contract sum by thirty-one percent, and for Contract A, it's fifteen percent. I want to know the impact on Consultant X for getting an unsatisfactory performance rating. We rely on the administration to implement the project. In reality, we do not only look at the manuals or guidelines. My second question about managing the contractors. This is about the management of the Transport Department. I want to ask about pre-tender assessment. Three point one three. It didn't spell out in Contract D that an emergency vehicular access would need to be built. Ms. Yoonis Yong asked this question during pre-tender vetting. What is the role of Consultant X? Concerning the management of Contract D, I want to ask about the responsibility of the administration and Consultant X. According to Annex M of Document Gen one, there is a pre-tender vetting mechanism. Is this mechanism effective? If it is, then how come under Contract D, ten VOs were issued and there was an additional cost of some ninety million dollars? This is about the role of Consultant X. Mr. Yao. In relation to the point about VOs, as mentioned, it's an instruction, not a VO. The instruction sets out further details. We had the initial design and detailed designs are carried out under different contracts. VE panel is an example. In the initial design, it shows where VE panels are needed. For the tunnel, there is Contract B as well as Contract E. We give them reference materials, we also give them instructions. And Contractor E was acting as a coordinator. Three point one three A mentions that there are three instructions and one VO. Well, you had to give ten instructions because there was a lack of details in your original documents. And how come Consultant X wasn't held accountable for that, Mr. Yao? For those ten instructions, say, for the VE panels, seventy-six percent the VE panels. Well, we gave Contractor D the instructions of where they had to put in VE panels, and they have to tie in with the works of Contractor B. And also, they have to tie in with the TCSS. So more work had to be done. For design and build contracts, at the beginning, they could not get all the details in one go. Therefore, we gave them instructions so that they could tie in with the other contracts. So it is the Highways Department's responsibility, Mr. Yao. The instructions were clarifications of details. The contracts were carried out at the same time. Contract B was for the tunnel. Contract E was for the TCSS. And the other contract was for the VE panels. And there was also the design and build contract. It means that the detailed design and the construction works are carried out in parallel. The initial instructions cannot cover all the interfacing works. That's why we have to give them further instructions. And this helps save time. And such a coordination effort is required when multiple contracts have to be implemented at the same time. So further details have to be sorted out at different stages of the implementation of the contracts. Ms. Khan. I want to ask about the Highways Department's response, three point one nine. The Highways Department says in preparing the documents and verifying the documents, the relevant personnel will have to comply with the guidelines. You have to ensure the completeness, accuracy, and consistency among all the tender documents. The truth is that you ended up giving ten instructions, and these were not reflected in your original tender documents, is that right, Director? Can you answer me directly? Please do not beat around the bush. You admitted in the report that there were undesirable situations, which ended up with an additional cost of some ninety million dollars and ten instructions. Seventy-six percent of the ninety-two million dollars were about the instructions. Well, you had to give further instructions because it wasn't clear enough in your original contracts. You did not name it as VO or variation order. If you could have, if you had made it clearer in the contract, you wouldn't have had to give further instructions. Secretary. In three point one nine, the administration agrees that in preparing the documents, we have to remind our staff to vet the tender documents and that we have to ensure accuracy and completeness of these tender documents. This is clear. I want to explain to Ms. Khan about three point one three B. There are some discrepancies among contract documents. As mentioned by the Director, in the future, we will make use of BIM. We want to, through BIM, ensure that all the construction details would be aligned across the contract drawings and tender documents. Ms. Khan. Page nine of Gen three. The last public hearing was mentioned that it took three years for Contractor A to issue the variation order. According to the administration's reply, this is undesirable. The administration should hold the manager accountable. Members of the public as well as legal members care about this. We have to ensure that the government has exercised due diligence. We want to know if the relevant parties involved are held accountable. We have this audit report. Is it enough for you to just reply to this report? Are the relevant staff held accountable, or are they simply being transferred to other positions? Secretary. We think that it is not ideal to implement certain construction works without an official or formal VO. We ask our staff to stringently comply with the relevant guidelines. We will look at the situation again. We have learned our lesson. We will see if it is necessary for us to provide further information to the committee. Page two of Gen three. Footnote two says that Consultant X in August twenty twenty had the authority to adjust the amount of VO to above three hundred thousand dollars. Why is it the case, Director? We were aware of the adjustments as well as the VOs. However, the VOs require our approvals. The Development Bureau adjusted the amount of VO from eight hundred thousand dollars to one billion dollars. So it is not due to this, the content of the contract. It is, the adjustments was done based on the Development Bureau's guideline, is that right? It's not for this particular project. All right. I want to move on to Gen four. FSTB states that the Project Strategy and Governance Office under the Development Bureau has a role to play, and it was set up back in twenty sixteen. It seems that the establishment of the office help give confidence to legal members because it help oversee a lot of things.
May Sabrina Law. On variation orders and the Development Bureau's involvement, the Highways Department can take this question because we don't have a role in this process. Mr. Tony Yao. Now, PSGO had this rule, starting from twenty seventeen, any VO exceeding one point four million dollars required approval. Ms. Carmen Khan. The FSTB said they had no role to play during a construction. I'm looking at the written response. So when a proposal comes in, I'm wondering, in light of this hearing, whether the FSTB can give us any undertaking about the amount involved. Thank you. As always, when a public works project proposal comes to legal, we follow our mechanism. We look at the proposal along with the Development Bureau so that we make sure the estimates are made in line with our mechanism. This is to make sure that the provisions for price fluctuation is indeed prepared based on the mechanism involving the Government Economist. On overspending, we will talk to the PSGO about any scope for improvement in the future. Ms. Carmen Khan, I got worried when I heard, as always, I don't want sticking to the past practice. I want to see the government do better. Years of fiscal deficit, don't just stick to your past practice. Please step up monitoring. Thank you. We will look into this. Given the fiscal deficit, cost control in public works projects is top of mind for us. We will review the matter and see where we can enhance the work. Chairman, I now turn to Part three, three point two three. Mr. Michael Look discussed this part a moment ago. Labor and industrial safety are top of mind for this council too. Now, Contractor A, twenty-third of April twenty sixteen, under Contract A, a worker was killed because of the accident, and this worker was drowned. And the very poor performance rating was given for a quarterly report for March to May in the subsequent year. So my question is, after that accident, did Contractor A get awarded government contracts afterwards? Mr. Tony Yao. I can provide supplemental information after the meeting. Ms. Carmen Khan, that's twenty sixteen. Performance rating for twenty sixteen. Let's backtrack to one point seven, paragraph one point seven. Contract D. I'm looking at Table two. It's page six. Contract D awarded in April twenty eighteen. Three point two, note thirty-nine. Contractor D was the same company as Contractor A. So, within two years after the very poor performance rating, that same contractor got our contract, and that was Contract D. So can the government prepare a reply to this point? Mr. Tony Yao. We can provide the information later about the sequence of events. I will provide the information after the meeting. I will provide the information after the meeting about what happened in twenty eighteen. Anything to add from the department? Our legal advisor? We don't want to mislead the public, so for table two, we have Contract A through H. These are the contracts, not the contractors. So I think that's how we should read table two, page six, table two. I see Contract A through H, those are contracts. Are we talking about contractors A through H? Maybe this is a question that should go to the Audit Commission. Note thirty nine. Now to answer the legal advisor's question, I'm reading note thirty nine. Contractor D is Consultant A. So I want to clarify. Is Contract A, Contractor A, Professor Nelson Lem? Correct. So we're talking about the contract, not Contractor A. So table two, you look at Contract A through H. Contract A does not correspond to Contractor A. Ms Carmen Khan. I need to sort this out. So does it mean that Contractor D worked on Contract D? So did Contractor D work on Contract D? Mr Tony Yao. Did Contractor A work on Contract D? Mr Tony Yao. I think you can match the contract with the contractor. So Contractor A, Contract A. Like so. Ms Carmen Khan. Can we get them to look into their information? Mr Tony Yao said Contract D, you can match that with Contractor D. Anything to add? Nothing to add. Contract D. Contractor D is indeed the same as Contractor A. The point is, table two, you see Contract A through D. The question is, when you see Contract D, does that refer to Contractor D? Is that the case? Assistant Director, Mr Pun. That's correct. So you see Contract A, you, that's worked, that's for Contractor A, and you can match the contracts and contractors accordingly. So Ms Khan, you're right. I thank the legal advisor for raising this point, so we are now clear on this point. So you can see, Mar- March to May twenty sixteen, very poor performance rating because of fa- because of a fatal accident. And then within two years, the same contractor got our contract being Contract D. Contract D had a large contract sum, two point six billion dollars. I want to point this out. In the interest of time, I will stop here. Do you need a response from Mr Tony Yao? I want a written reply because he said he would look into this. Mr Michael Look.
Thank you. The Tumun Chelakok Link is a key piece of infrastructure. It links up the airport with the Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge. We have discussed the importance of the link. We have had an extensive discussion of the role of the consultant. The role of a consultant is to assess. But sometimes it becomes guessing. And the consultant's guesses were off the mark. Let's look at history. Let's look at what happened. The Tumun Chelakok Link was built along with the Tumun West Bypass. And then there was disagreement over the alignment of the bypass, but the Tumun Chelakok Link went ahead. At the District Council, September twenty twenty, there was a meeting before the link opened. Local stakeholders were told. You can see that in paragraph four point two five, Consultant X. Tumun's busy road will remain manageable by twenty twenty six. My concern is Tumun Road through Wong Chu Road. What does it mean by a manageable level? Is that a sleight of hand with words or is that simply a blind guess? Once the link opened, the link saw serious congestion. Wong Chu Road, traffic jam every day on both lanes. I live in New Territories West. I have firsthand experience. The Transport Department's figures, and that's four point two six C. The second point. In twenty twenty three, it was one point one seven being the VC ratio. And that was only the early days when we put COVID behind us. The airport had yet to recover its capacity. The northbound travel for Hong Kong vehicles had yet to start. We don't have the twenty twenty four figures, but we can be sure the traffic jam must have been way worse last year. So the consultant was way off the mark. So was the government dragging its feet with the improvement measures? We should be questioning the judgment of Consultant X. Now I'm looking at paragraph four point two six C. The TD said there were improvement measures for Longfu Road roundabout. So the waiting time was shorter by a minute and a half. That roundabout was among the few with traffic lights. But why put traffic lights at the roundabout? Twenty oh two, Longfu Road was opened. And then at the junction with Longmu Road, there was a roundabout. And then there were lineup site issues, accidents happened frequently. In twenty oh six, it became a T junction with traffic lights. In twenty oh nine, there was an audit report number twenty three. This issue was brought up. And then we had the Tumun Chelakok Link works. For some reason, that junction became a roundabout again. What was in the mind of the consultant? The roundabout didn't work. Now with so many cars at the Longfu Road roundabout, we have this roundabout again. Why not have a viaduct or better options? Now we are stuck with a roundabout. And you put a traffic light. Again, this is the responsibility of the consultant. So traffic volume, roundabout design, the consultant failed in their job. So what should we make of the roundabout? Who will take the question, please? Mr Tong Yao.
Now for the Tumun Chelakok Link, it's a strategic route. It links up the local roads. Different options are available. You can have traffic lights, roundabouts, flyovers, subways, et cetera. The design depended on the traffic flow at the moment. It depended on the directions of traffic at the moment. There were engineering considerations and then the factors were taken into account as a whole and then the best design was picked. So that was the work. Traffic flow may change over time. Uh, we will keep looking at whether there's need to improve the roads. We will work with the TD on this. Mr Michael Look. This is a glaring mistake in the design. The relevant departments did a poor job in gatekeeping. Twenty oh two, Longfu Road opened. It was a roundabout. In twenty oh two, it did not work. That's why in twenty oh six, it became a T junction. Twenty oh nine, an audit report brought up the issue. Why a roundabout again? Mr Tong Yao did not answer my question. They felt it was appropriate at the moment. Why? It was backtracking. A roundabout had been proved to fail. You only get more cars because now it's linked up with the airport and the Hong Kong Zhuhai Macau Bridge. There will be more cars, more heavy vehicles, more private cars and buses. Why a roundabout? It's a terrible consultant. They're not breaking the law. Other ways we can take points off these consultants. How do we fix this? Just then, the Highways Department answered the question about Consultant X. So can we get a response from Mr Tong Yao? It's about the roundabout. The roundabout now is vastly different from the one bef- that came before. It's a large roundabout. It's a standard design. The consultant also conducted a traffic impact assessment on top of the traffic design. They had to look at the road capacity and make sure it could cope with the traffic. That impact assessment was approved by the Transport Department. Anything to add from the TD?
Ms Angela Lee. As Mr Tong Yao said, when the Tumun Chelakok Link opened, there were two, we had to add two points for cars to leave and enter the road to link everything up. A roundabout allowed us to put two left-turning lanes. So we wanted this dedicated lane to support this strategic route. And Mr Yao discussed the overall consideration for the road. Mr Michael Look. Those who know the area can tell on Longfu Road, on one side you have the lo- roundabout to Longmu Road. On the other side, it goes into to the link. Then there are inland river piers, warehousing space, eco park, many heavy vehicles. Take the road and also buses and private cars. My question for the department is, do you see a flaw with the TIA done back then? It misjudged the traffic volume.
Ms Mabel Chan. I can a- appreciate Mr Look's concern about the traffic situation there. The traffic design of that area is also top of mind for me. On the traffic assessment, the departments involved did their work. The Tumun Chelakok Link then and now managed to redistribute the traffic. And more cars took the land out of roads. Would this Tumun Chelakok Link? It has made a difference in redistributing the traffic. For those in traffic management, we know traffic is dynamic. We cannot just look at things at the point in time. We should be focusing on the future. The Commissioner for Transport mentioned at junctions, there are measures for cars to switch lanes and traffic lights. That's for the bottlenecks. Those are the short-term measures. For the medium term, slip roads will make a difference. I can say this to Mr Look. Where financial resources permit, our bureau and our departments will focus on those two slip roads. So that the link can accommodate more cars and the roads around the area can also see greater capacity. So that this infrastructure can live up to its promise. I know there's a point also close to the heart of Mr Look and for the long term. We're not just looking at Tumun. There are logistics facilities nearby, all the way to the Kuicheng Container Port. And then you have the northwestern terr- New Territories, the northern metropolis. We will not shy away from the point about Route eleven. Now, you can see in the major transport infrastructure blueprint for Hong Kong, Route eleven is part of that blueprint. We will take that forward. And that would be a major project for our bureau. Uh, we have to be mindful of the cost and we will prioritize our project. We will try to make that project a priority. We're already working on the preparations. We're enhancing these aspect so that we can do a better job in the preparations.
Mr Look. Chairman, I agree with the secretary that this link serves a very important function. I'm not criticizing this link itself, but then with poor connection, everything falls apart. So I'm thinking about future improvements. The Tumun Bypass should be completed as quickly as possible in order to provide a proper solution to the problem. But I think that this won't come to fruition until eight to ten years later. What about this connecting road between Longfu Road and Qingguan Road? Is it possible to complete this slip road more quickly? Uh, according to an earlier meeting with the Transport Department and the Highways Department, it won't be built until twenty twenty nine. Now last year, it was twenty twenty four, right? And that, uh, you told me it would take five years to build a slip road. Now, how could I level with the public the fact that it would take five years to complete? The public would take me to task. So Chairman, perhaps I am digressing a bit to a local issue, but I do want to talk about Longfu Road and its slip road with Qingguan Road. I think there is a planning issue here. Recently, I received a complaint. I mean, the electrical's complaint office received a complaint relating to this slip road. Right? I think that the, we're all aware of this question being a policy issue in general. But anyway, um, secretary, any response? Well, this is the Public Accounts Committee. We shouldn't be looking into a specific case. So perhaps you should note what I said just now. I said that when financial resources permit, our bureau will strive to give priority to these two slip roads as mentioned. By priority, I do hope that will enhance speed and efficiency. These are short slip roads. It's impossible for it to take five years to complete. By twenty twenty nine, Chinese astronauts could reach Mars. Ms Khan.
I am concerned about construction site safety. Now I echo what Mr Emin Wong said. I'm not going to repeat his point. I think the administration should uphold the laws and regulations stringently. And that the manual should be And that the manual should be revised and make sure that there is compliance. Especially for contract B, according to the report, there were, there were one hundred and thirty accidents. Even if you consider project delays, in a five-year period, there were altogether a hundred and thirty accidents. So, I'm concerned about strengthened management. My first question is this. In the past, did any contractor get taken out of the list after an accident had happened? Uh, you can give me a written reply. My next question is that according to three point three O of the report, the highways department will continue to make efforts to enhance site safety. And then, under B, take additional measures to ensure its contractors timely report accidents at construction sites in order uh, in accordance with the requirements. Now, you can either give me a written response or tell me the details now. We don't want to read words like further improvements, a con- make continued efforts, et cetera. I want to know exactly what are involved, say, whether a contractor in question will be taken out of the list in event of an accident. A poor rating would be given by the development bureau, and that would affect the prospects of tendering in the future. And on the twenty eighth of July twenty twenty three, the development bureau issued a technical circular, and that's five stroke twenty twenty three. In the event of a serious accident, the development bureau could immediately suspend the um, eligibility of a contractor in participating in tendering. Right? Thank you for the supplementary information. It's very useful. We need to know that apart from the general descriptions in three point three O A and B, that there are specific measures. I'd like to know what these measures are. Right? I'll supplement the details in writing afterwards. I come to part four, four point one two. That's a question for the transport department. When it comes to the maintenance requirements of the two tunnels, they uh, did not form part of the agreement in the first place. So, like the commissioner said, upon expiry of the uh, maintenance contract or M O M agreement, the, another contract was awarded to the same contractor. Uh, in the second agreement just came into effect in December last year, we already, we've already included the maintenance responsibilities of the equipment items of the two tunnels in the agreement. That means you've addressed this dispute, and that um, is for the M O M contractor to take up the maintenance responsibilities. Right? Now, on this issue, let's turn to Gen three. For the benefit of the public and the media, can you elaborate on the answer given? Now, after the inadequate um, working on insufficient working hours of the staff, of the contractor, as well as other issues have been identified, there are questions relating to, say, dispute resolution. This time around, you've awarded the contract to the same party again. Can you explain why? The second M O M agreement lasts for six years. And the contract has been awarded after open tendering. Any party interested could submit the bid. Now, we adopt the double envelope approach with technical as well as price assessments. And set out in our reply, we adopt the ratio of seventy to thirty in assessing the bid. We also make public the criteria for tender assessment. The bidder with a high score under the double enveloped approach will be awarded the M O M agreement. And that's how we have awarded the co- the agreement to the same party as it had a high score. What about the pricing element? Among the bidders, um, the, the winning bid had the second lowest bid. But then, in assessing the bid in general, we considered the two envelopes. So, have you considered the performance of this contractor in your procurement efforts? Yes, we made reference to the past performance of this contractor. Right? That's all I wish to ask for the moment. Any more questions from members in relation to parts three and four to re- uh, chapter seven of Report eighty-three? If not, I will give the floor to Mr. Michael Look again. Is it time for con- uh, concluding remarks or what, Chairman? Right, thank you. Tung Moon Chel Ak Kok link is the crux of the chapter of this audit report. Members have looked at contract management relating to contracts A and B, other contract management issues, um, the administration of contracts and operation and traffic management. Members have offered their views. It's important to draw conclusions from previous experience as we spearhead other infrastructure projects such as northern metropolis, Route eleven, as the secretary mentioned, as well as the artificial island in the central waters. It is important that we enhance the mechanism. Um, as far as contractors are concerned or consultant, and we also need to control cost. I believe this audit report has provided some good insights. Chairman. I beg your pardon, but I'd like to refer to some local issues again. Now, this report has everything to do with the Tung Moon West bypass not being completed or constructed at the same time. There are outstanding issues. I hope that after the meeting, the administration could speed up its work. We envisage a continuous increase in demand. But despite increase in traffic volume, if we could not provide better supporting um, network in the vicinity, then that will spark some other issues. So, I hope that the administration could expedite this work. Anything else from the government departments? Ms. Chen.
Just very briefly, on behalf of my colleagues, I thank the audit for the value for money audit on the relevant topic. And in the past two meetings, I like to thank Chairman for his leadership and the members for the questions which helped us prepare written replies. And I do have two points to make in conclusion. In the future, when taking forward transport infrastructure projects, we'll be making reference to these suggestions and insights, especially on project cost control. The supervision mechanism and the engagement of consultant will continue to make improvements. In terms of future procurement, we'll continue to enhance the mechanism relating to uh, supervision, contract, engagement of contractors, et cetera. So that we can give better forecasts and cope with unforeseen circumstances. And that's in if, in event of instructions or variation orders, we can make sure that cost effectiveness can be achieved. On site investigation, um, the preparation of tender documents, I'm sure that members' views would be very useful. Now, on site safety, I didn't have a chance to respond to that. I'd like to put it on record that um, one accident is one too many. So, we'll be giving a written response to Ms. Carmen Khan and other members. But as I said, in general, we take follow-up action after the occurrence of accident, but more importantly, we need to ta- um, take preventive measures. We work with the works department, development bureau, and the construction industry council. We have very close collaboration on, say, the adoption of technologies such as uh, the smart site safety system. Now, we introduce some mandatory requirements. We also make sure that contractors are proactive in protecting their workers. We need to take the two-pronged approach to ensure zero accident at construction sites. This is definitely our target. The public also expects us to speed up our work in the future and enhance efficiency. But at the same time, construction site safety cannot be compromised. We'll continue to enhance our efforts. Anything from the audit? No.
Right, I thank the administration and the audit and members for attending today's meeting. That's the end of the public hearing of this chapter. Uh, would the administration please give us written replies to the questions raised by members as quickly as possible? You can submit the replies to the secretariat. Now, we're going to work on the report and submit this report to Let's Call as quickly as possible. Thank you.